Good morning, everyone. As I was mentioning earlier, Councilmember Kellogg will not be able to join us. He's got work obligations. Councilmember Morehead is being interviewed, apparently, this morning on the radio. We'll have to ask him what the interview is all about when he gets here and put him on the spot. Welcome to the, uh, what's, May 31st? I don't know where Mr. Westcott is. Who else are we missing? Anybody? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That would be everybody. Welcome to the retreat. This was something that Councilmember Hubach had asked to do some time ago. And it began, as I remember, as a getting-to-know-you retreat. And since then, it's been morphed a little bit to, uh, legacy projects or something of that sort. I guess we'll just, we'll open the floor here in a minute to any projects that anybody would like to talk about and that sort of thing. I had suggested that we do, each of us do a short ninety-second elevator speech about our background and stuff like that as part of the get-to-know-you part. If everybody's okay with that, I'll go ahead and start. I've been in Raymore twenty-two years, something like that. I came to Raymore from California where I was, uh, I had gone right after I graduated from college to work at a startup company. I was employee number one hundred and four in the company. I hired a whole bunch of engineers and technicians. My job there began as a test technician and worked through a number of other roles, including design engineering and then engineering and production management. While I was out there, I took a, an MBA from City University of Santa Clara and left there, sold out my stock options, and moved here to Raymore to raise our two daughters. From there, I did, I was a hired gun engineer, so to speak. I did a number of projects, designing things as diverse as RF tracking devices used for falconry to decoding satellite data streams, uh, having to do with some future market stuff. From there, I became a, uh, teaching, a professor teaching at a couple of local colleges. One of them offered me a full-time position, so I became a professor, later on became a dean. I was responsible for developing a couple of new programs of study and taking them through both programmatic and regional accreditation. After that, I took a position as the chief academic officer at another university that had programs having to do with nursing and radiology and criminal justice and business and engineering and everything from the associate level to the graduate and postgraduate level. And I prepared that campus for regional accreditation. I've since retired, and all I do now is stuff like mayor, so. Quick ninety-second elevator speech. Who would like to go next? All right, all right.
Okay. I grew up in Lane, Kansas. I don't know if you know where that's at. Little town of two hundred. Went to school there until the sixth grade, then I finished my schooling in Osawatomie, Kansas. First job, a local steel manufacturer. We designed and built pressure vessels and pipeline components. When that closed, I tried a number of different occupations just to be able to stay around there, including a professional mechanic, a police officer, and insurance salesman. So anyway, after that, we just decided to move to Kansas City, which is probably the best thing we ever did. And, uh, my engineering background is pretty diverse as well. Uh, let's see, there's just so many things. Industrial dust collection, pneumatic conveyor of bulk solids. I think the last job I had was, uh, conveying, conveyor stuff for automating, uh, auto plants. Uh, let's see what else. Married almost thirty-nine years, no kids, got a cat instead. There ain't a whole lot else. I think that's about it.
Man of many hats and a fur kit.
I would say that, uh, real quickly, I've been married twenty-two years now and have four kids. I'm, uh, I'm an architect by training. And I spent the last fifteen years being an architect and dealing with all those issues that architects face. Been involved in a number of different types of building types, from, uh, from schools and hospitals to pharmaceutical manufacturing facilities and kind of run the gambit in between all of that. Forty-four years old and have four kids, and one of them is serving in the Air Force in South Korea right now. And, uh, I've got a new driver on the way in six months. And, uh, the other two are, uh, are doing well here in Raymore. I've been in Raymore for eleven years now. And, uh, came here shortly after we moved, uh, moved back to the Kansas City area from graduate school. And that's, uh, that's my life in a nutshell right now.
And, uh, Councilmember Westcott, you, you came in at the right time and sat in the right spot. We're doing ninety-second elevator speeches.
Uh, well, I've been a, uh, Cass County resident since I was five years old. Was born in Kansas City, lived there for the first five years of my life, moved here to go to school. Started over in Belton, attended kindergarten through the start of seventh grade in Belton. My parents moved to Raymore shortly after and have been here the majority of that time since. Yeah, been married for over, over twenty years, three kids. Oldest one is in college. Um, I teach business and entrepreneurship at Ottawa and Grantham Universities. And as many of you know, I'm running for the Cass County Auditor. So that's, that's what my life's about now.
All right, my turn. I grew up down small town. I'm a small-town girl. I grew up in the Archie-Harrisonville area, graduated from Archie High School. Um, loved living out in the country on a farm as a kid. I went to college at UMKC, graduated with two bachelor's degrees, and then got a teaching job. While I worked, or while I went to school at UMKC, I worked at American Century, so I got a picture of that kind of corporate life. It was not for me. And so I, I'm a teacher. I started teaching in the Belton School District right out of college and continued on at UMKC and got my master's degree. I left Belton and taught in Harrisonville for a little while. Somewhere in there, got married, had a couple of kids. Um, my kids are eleven and eight. And, um, was very lucky to be able to stay home with them for a few years. So I took a few years off from my career and stayed home with my kids while they were little. And just in the last few years, I got back into education, first part-time as a parent educator, working for parents as teachers. And, um, now I'm a full-time certified preschool teacher for the Belton School District at Grace Early Childhood Center. Um, and I'm getting ready to start on my Ed Specialist Degree in Administration. I love being a leader in the schools. I love doing things innovative in my classroom. And, um, that's probably part of why I was intrigued by city council. I, I like that leadership role. I love talking to people. And, um, I've learned lots as a city council member and, kind of, very cliche for a teacher to say, lifelong learning. But that really, I really love learning new things, and that's probably why I like my position on city council and as a teacher.
Jay, you're next.
Well, I'm, uh, married twenty-three years now, two kids. Ethan's in, will be going into eighth grade in the fall out at the middle school. And Evan will be starting, uh, fifth grade at Eagle Glen in the fall, thirteen and ten. We've been in this area since nineteen ninety, initially moved to Belton. Been in Raymore since ninety-three or ninety-four. We moved in, uh, over in the Timber Creek area, real close to the schoolhouse built over there. And that's why we moved to Raymore. We lived in Belton rented, but Raymore had such, uh, such a much larger housing choices. I mean, you know, you couldn't buy a house in Belton like you could over here. And that's why I came, like most of the rest of the immigration movement of the nineties to Raymore. And that's, we liked it here and we stayed. Went to school and graduated from Bethany, Missouri, known as South Harrison in northern Missouri. I'm from, my family's from the Princeton-Bethany area, Mercer and Harrison County. Uh, I, after high school, I went to, uh, to college at Northwest Missouri State University in Maryville. Graduated there with a bachelor's degree in political science, of all things, and a minor-
Go Bearcats!
Yeah, Bearcats, yes. You're not a Pitt State fan, are you?
Uh, my youngest daughter-
You have affiliation to Pitt State. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you know who the Bearcats are, you either went there or you're a Pitt State-
Well, it's, uh, the second graduate degree I got from Pitt State in Kansas, so go Gorillas, too.
Yes, we have the Gorillas, absolutely. After I graduated from, uh, the university there at Maryville, I went, I enlisted in the US Air Force. Did a tour of four years, thought for sure I'd get sent to Korea or Japan, Germany, something like that. Ended up with four years in Omaha, Nebraska. Intelligence operations. I was in the basement of SAC headquarters on midnights for the entire time. Yeah. And I saw some interesting things. Of course, that was during the Cold War, too. The end of the Cold War leading up into Desert Shield and Desert Storm, right before I got out. After I got out, I came to the Kansas City area because of general migration for rural Missourians. You go to one of the larger cities, depending on which side of the state you live in. I came down here and I took a, a job as a assistant manager at Aaron Rinns and Sells Office Furniture over in Olathe, Kansas, for a couple of months, uh, Belton. The city of Belton was hiring for a police officer position. I had a minor in criminal justice. I applied for that position. I was with the city of Belton as an officer for eight years from ninety to ninety-eight. Left there as a sergeant to go to work for Union Pacific Railroad. I'd been there for sixteen years. Started out as a conductor, uh, was a special agent. After about three months, they had an opening and I applied. And I've been doing that. Believe it or not, being a special agent for the railroad, while the initial job was much like a municipal police officer, when I got into public safety and some of the other facets of the railroad, it's, it's been at times almost more like, uh, probably closer to Jim and Eric's job because of the travel and the contact with local municipalities, trying to create partnerships with them to improve our public safety at crossings and trespassing pedestrian issues, that kind of thing. Enjoyed being here. You guys, I was on planning and zoning for five and a half years, Parks Board for two. Somebody talked me into this deal, and so far, I haven't run away, so that's why I'm here.
All right. Councilmember Hubach, you're next.
I don't think there's much about my life that people don't already know. I was born here, and if I'm lucky, I'll die here. Raymore is my hometown, and just about everything I have done has been based on that. Uh, over the years, I've started with help from another individual. We started the Historical Society. I've been a member of the Garden Club. A few years ago, we started the United Way here, and then we merged in with Kansas City. That's, uh, then I've been a member of the St. Paul's United Methodist Church and taught a Sunday School class for over twenty-five years. My roots, as far as city government go, are very old. When, uh, I decided I wanted, I graduated from Raymore High School. And when I wanted to go in further, I went into UMKC and I got a degree in urban affairs. They didn't have an urban affairs degree, so they created it for me. And what was interesting was I had to take, um, finance, school finance from the Department of Education because they said if you understood school financing, you understood anything because it was the hardest. Then I had to learn about how to make roads, so I had to go in in the science department. And they sent me into geology. We learned how to, uh, build roads. Then they said I had to have so many hours of Master of Laws courses. Well, I had never had any law courses, and if you know law, you have to be a licensed, I think, or at least pass the four years of, um, of, um, law in order to have, to go work on your masters. So it was a very difficult time for me because, uh, I didn't have the background for law. Everybody else in the class was a practicing lawyer. I mean, I learned a lot from them. I learned to ask questions because they were, what they were, all of them, especially in the zoning and planning class, they were oil, um, attorneys for oil companies. And they were trying to figure out how they could circumvent the cities and their different rules and regulations on planning and zoning. So I learned not only the pros of planning and zoning, but I learned the cons of it just as well. And I learned, and it's, uh, it was a difficult class. And so what I did for extra credit, one of the things, was I wrote the zoning ordinance and planning ordinance for the city of Raymore as a class project. And the interesting thing about that was after I wrote it, there was a vacancy came up in planning and zoning, and I held up my hand and then I'll, this is for the city of Raymore, I said, "I'll serve." The mayor said, "You know, we really need, next month," he said, we met once a month, and he said, "We really need somebody." And I held up my hand again. And finally, on the third time, I said, "Mr. Scott, I wrote the ordinance. I understand it. How come you don't want to put me on the board?" And he said, "'Cause the entire board said they would resign if you went on." So I, that was my, that was my first, um, understanding of, I guess, of what, how cities can be run. So what happened then, I ran for, um, mayor back in, what was it, two thousand? And I lost, and the winner put me on the planning commission. I was, I was on there for two years, then I decided to run for the council. I have carried petitions. I have circulated them. I have set up written ordinances. Also, when I wrote, had to do with setting up sidewalks. We didn't have any sort of, uh, an ordinance on developers having to provide sidewalks. That was one thing they've done. There's not much, really, as a citizen, that I haven't done when it comes to, uh, working for the city of Raymore. And I have, I'm an idea person. There's a lot of things I would like to see done while I still am around to do it. If I have any talent at all, it is I have been told by my professors that I have the ability to see how a little piece fits into the big puzzle, part of the puzzle. And as a result, sometimes I ask questions, and you all wonder where it comes from. But to me, that's part of the overall picture. And so that's the only talent, I think, that I, that I have. I enjoy what I'm doing, and, uh, I've got a lot of ideas I want to bring forth here.
The, uh, planning and zoning meeting once a month is quite a bit different than it was when Jay and I served on it, uh, a few years back, uh, where we were meeting, well, we were meeting every other week. And it seemed like we could meet every week and still have, uh, uh, things to talk about. Of course, development has slowed since then, and now planning and zoning meets twice a month and sometimes cancels one of those meetings, so. You did leave something out of your ninety-second elevator speech, though, Councilmember Hubach. Uh, if I remember right, yesterday was your birthday, so happy birthday to you.
I don't understand. I see the big picture. I don't understand what happened. On Thursday, I was X number of years. When I woke up on Friday, I was X plus one, and I don't know where that year went in that thirty, twenty-four hours. I'm trying to cover up for that.
All right.
I forgot to mention, I volunteer at the, um, Belton Hospital. And so down, I'm on the, as a retired postmaster, I went to work there as a volunteer. And I worked back on the dock delivering parcels and, um, getting signatures, just like being back in the post office again. Only I don't, I don't get all the complaints that I used to get from that.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your ninety-second elevator speech. If Councilmember Morehead shows up, and I would expect that he'd probably be here within fifteen, twenty minutes, uh, based on, uh, the email that I received from him. We'll put him on the spot and have him, uh, tell us what he did this morning on the radio station and have him give his ninety-second elevator speech. At this point, I'll go ahead and open the floor to general discussion. Does anybody want the floor? Councilmember Hubach?
I have about seven or eight items that I wanted us to consider. The first one is because Jason says he has to leave early. I wanted to start with it on aging. I think you all remember receiving something from the, um, from Mid-America about their setting up a commission to talk about aging. And I think the city manager or administrator from Pleasant Hill is on that. And there's a number of, of things that we can do, and I wanted us to consider them for budget time. There's, some of the things that they mentioned are, um, bigger street signs. I notice in going through town, some of the street signs are that big, and some of them are a little like that. I was going to ask that the council, um, see about paying to have all street signs large enough that they can be seen by the elderly as they're driving along. That would be one thing.
Now, when you say "street signs," do you actually mean, like, the, the traffic control signs, like stop signs?
No, no, no. I'm talking about when I, when I'm on, um, Jay Highway, there's a great big sign that says "Hubach," and then there's a tiny little sign that says "Missousetts." The signs are not uniform, and I'm talking about having bigger signs so as you're driving along, you can safely see them. Another one would be like the traffic signals that you're talking about. One of the things that it mentioned in this, an early Missouri Municipal League one was to make the, um, traffic signals stronger. Because sometimes, I know especially there in front of the post office, if the light is just right, you can't tell whether it's a red light or a green light or a caution light there. So if we had them stronger, then it'd be easier for the, the elderly to see them. Then, um, of the ability, a lot of older ones, I know one especially, she doesn't drive, but she walks everywhere. However, there's no place for her to sit down, and she's somewhere between where she lives out there in the, in, on Washington, the older part of town, and she wants to get over there toward, um, Wal, uh, not only Walmart, but, um, Price Shopper. She walks it. But there's no place for her to sit down, and she gets tired. So we, we need to see about on fifty, eighty, especially, maybe having some, um, park benches. Two or three park benches there so that older people or even younger ones or pregnant women can sit down and rest a little bit. That was one of the things. And then the other one, what I wanted to, um, have Jason talk about a little bit, is housing for the aging, because that's going to be very, very important. Because right now, I think a third of the people in Raymore are fifty-five and older. And if they get more and more, we're going to be a town that has a lot of older folks. And how receptive are we to them getting around and being able to live in Raymore and be, um, self-sufficient? So I asked Jason what kind, he's an architect, as you know, and I had read in, I think it's San Jose, what they had done, they had had seven architects come and develop, each one developed a prototype of a house that they would like to have, that could be either like a granny flat or something like that. And then they gave them something for people to look at when they, uh, were considering something like that. So Jason, would you expand on that more?
Well, I just think from a, um, from maybe a brainstorming session, I think, you know, when we look at what's happening as a baby boomer's age, you know, you're looking at, at, uh, getting the crest of the wave here in about two years, essentially. Two thousand and fifteen, or I guess in a year now, is when we're, they're expecting to see the wave. And, um, as, as the population ages and they require care, a lot of the options that, um, uh, that we have available to us right now in terms of, you know, we, we've spoken several times this last year on, um, on having a piece of property where we could have an accessory dwelling on it and, um, and kind of accommodate that type of, uh, uh, living situation where you have a, an additional dwelling on a piece of property. And, um, a lot of, we, we have a situation here where we don't have a lot of, um, a lot of our residents don't live on property, properties of that size that would accommodate that. And so, um, their, their options are, are a little bit limited if they want to remain in Raymore. Now, they can, they can buy out, um, they can, they can buy a larger piece of property within the city limits. But if they, if they wish to remain where they are, their options are, are a little bit limited. And so, uh, when we look at options for, um, maybe a smaller piece of property, I would like to, I would like to kind of see planning and zoning look at creative ideas to deal with floor area ratios and how that, that works against law size and what can be done to provide a greater number of our residents some flexibility in their ability to either add on or, um, or, or put a, a smaller accessory dwelling on a, on a smaller plot of land. I think that, I think it does a couple of things for us. One, I think that, um, we start to address the issue of, of, um, in-place care for aging parents. I think that starts to speak back to, um, uh, increasing the density that we've talked about, um, doing. I also think that, just in terms of social interaction, one of the things that I've been greatly concerned about and is probably the overall driver when I think about the decisions that I make and the way that I look at the issues is, I look at, um, I look at society as a whole, and I, I'm like, I ask myself the question, what's the, what's the basic unit of society and civilization? Well, to me, that basic unit is not the individual. That basic unit, to me, is the family. The family is the basic unit of society and civilization. And I start to look at what factors, what policies and decisions do we make that either encourage strong families and encourage, uh, those type of relationships to grow and continue? Uh, and what type of decisions do we make that, that kind of detract from that? And so, um, and so that's kind of where I'm looking at this issue with aging parents is, how does, how does having, um, how does having parents close by strengthen families? How does that intergenerational contact between, um, members of the family on a regular and constant basis, how does that benefit? And I think, uh, in fact, I know that studies show that when you do have intergenerational activities and when, you know, family is close together like that, they take care of them, the families become stronger. That strengthens, that in turn strengthens our community, a strong community, a prosperous community. And so that's kind of where I come from when I start to talk about, you know, we need to develop, maybe think about developing those type of options or brainstorming on how we can be more creative and allow that.
I'm, I'm curious. You, you mentioned the planning and zoning. Is, is, are, are there rules that we currently have that are restricting the ability for people to, um, you know, have, uh, have their parents in their home or anything like that, or?
I, I don't think there's rules that restrict them from having their parents in their home. I think, I think what, what becomes restricted is that, say, for, for instance, a small residential plot, based on the floor area ratio, you, you're only allowed a certain building limit.
No, it would take original town, for example. I mean, it-
Right.
You know, the lots there are fairly small, and the buildings are fairly large, so.
So if you had an individual that wanted, wanted them to live, but actually needed more room to, to bring a parent in to the home, so, um, perhaps they wouldn't be able to do that because the, they're, they're bound by the square footages that they're, they're allowed to build, the building area that they're allowed on that particular piece of property. And I think maybe looking at that, do we want to allow them to build more, um, within the setbacks? Because, you know, you, you're very well aware, you have the, you have the lot lines, and you have the setbacks.
Right, right.
And then the building area is even smaller, the allowable building area is even smaller than that. And I'm just talking about, do we, do we increase that allowable building area to allow for maybe a greater, a, a larger addition so that, so that they can have them close, but they're not on top of one?
Right. Councilmember Stevens?
I just want to make a comment on that density thing. I, I think if you make more dense, you're really kind of shooting yourself in the foot on that particular part of it where you can't build. I mean, if you have a small lot, there's only so much you can do, but, you know, more practical approach, I think. you know, more practical approach, I think. I think a lot of this is going to be driven by who's willing to buy stuff. You really can't force people to do things they don't want to do, I guess. I mean, you know, there are housing designs called universal housing design, but again, it's kind of driven by the consumer. So I'm not sure what exactly we're going to be able to do because almost all this stuff is driven by the consumer.
I see definitely a little bit of both sides of Councilman Boehner and Councilman Stevens' point. What I would be kind of interested in, just on the topic coming up, is maybe asking Mr. Catterett if he would be willing to give us a short presentation at a future work session just on kind of how we fit into that mold right now and what things could we do to encourage that type of building in the future, or at least making it easier, less permits. Right now, under the example that Councilman Boehner gave, if someone had the situation in Old Town, they would have to go through, of course, the Board of Zoning Adjustment or ask for a variance from planning and zoning. So not impossible, but a little bit more red tape to step through. Maybe we could loosen up some of those things and make it a little bit easier. Might, might be worth our time to hear from Mr. Catterett if that was something he was interested in doing for us.
I just had a couple thoughts on that. And again, kind of agreeing with both of you, but I think that Raymore really lacks affordable housing. And when we had our goal setting session with, with city staff, even that came up, that we needed to have more variety in, you know, what could we do as leaders in the city to create more variety in available housing in Raymore as far as affordability? Because if there's nothing here that, you know, parents, grandparents can afford, what are their other options to be close to their family that's here? And that's kind of what I got from what Jason was saying. One of the other issues, I think, as far as adding on and when we talked about the accessory dwellings, part of that is also being able to have separate water or separate utilities so that that family who's moving in can have that independence of not feeling like they're sponging off their children or, you know, to be able to let them move in, have that closeness, have the assistance that they need, but still have that independence that allows them to not give up, I guess. You know, that's an important part.
Thank you. You know, I, I do believe that, you know, a lot of the housing in Raymore has been market-driven. But you know, one of the things that the city has done to actually address some of the aging issue is, you know, through our sidewalk program. You know, previously, you know, especially in my ward, which is one of the older wards, you know, we, we had, you know, fairly decent sized lots that the houses set back from the road. And so there was actually a natural barrier that cut off connectivity. Well, by going and putting through our sidewalk program in, we've actually increased the ability for people to make those connections again. So we have been, you know, moving that way anyway with some of the other projects. We just haven't actually said it was for, you know, that reason. It's just been one of the, the natural side effects. But Councilmember Hubock touched on a, an idea that I think is, is great is, is the benches. But I don't think we should just limit it to just that one area. I think we should look at our entire trail system and actually look at putting them along our trails. Because then maybe it would actually encourage people to, to use them more if there were rest areas, you know, along the way.
I kind of wanted to talk about the subsidized housing thing too. I guess that's what it really amounts to when you talk about affordable housing. So I'm not sure, is that what you had in mind? I mean, there's only...
Affordable housing doesn't have to be subsidized.
I'm just wondering how you're going to get more affordable housing. You, you gotta pay so much to get so much square foot and the lots cost so much. So I'm not really sure how affordable that we're actually talking about.
Other comments? Councilmember Hubock?
One of the things that I would like to see us do when you're talking about affordable housing or you're talking about in this, the Planning and Zoning Commission is one of the most important ones that we have. But you know, we seldom if ever meet with them. And yet, they're, they're planning our future and the mayor speaks on his behalf and I guess he speaks on behalf of, of the council too. But I would like to see us mean at least twice a year with the planning and zoning and let, they may have some questions about the way in which we do things and we may have questions about them. And the best way to handle it is to communicate. And face-to-face communication is the best way, I think, to do it. Because they would answer questions like you're talking about on the trails and, and the, the different ways in which we can handle for people that want to use them, whether we're talking about making it easier for people to try to have affordable housing. And in fact, what does affordable housing mean? Out where I am on five acre tracks across the street from me, it's not in the city of Raymore, if that's, that's a million dollar home out there, that's not what I would call an affordable home. But how, you have things like that and then you have those who are the elderly who have had jobs that have never been high-paying and yet they, they need to have a place to live and they can take care of themselves and they can take care of their property. So we've got to allow for both things. And I think we need to have closer communication with the Planning and Zoning Commission in order to do that. I'm talking about the commission. I'm not talking about staff. I'm talking about the volunteer members on that. Because some of them, take like Bernie Crane, he's been on there a while and he's pretty knowledgeable about what is going on.
I'm gonna kind of diverge into a related topic that Councilman Hubock brought up, kind of on the general topic of aging and then we, we focused on housing. I did want to say I like your idea about the benches. I think that's a good idea. I see other heads nodding. I think that's, that's a fairly popular idea. If we could kind of come up with a plan for that, I think that would be popular and money well spent. But on the, the traffic side of things that you talked about, that, that one kind of comes back to me near and dear in my heart as a guy that's focused on traffic and public safety. And we are going to see the same thing that you're talking about with housing. I represent, born in 63, if you read the articles, I represent the tail end of the baby boomers and I'll retire. And I'm going to go a little longer, but I've got about 14 years left. And then that, that whole wave has passed. And these are the same people, and I'll be one of them that have driven all their life as opposed to, say, some of Councilman Hubock's era and older where they were expected to give up the keys. We are not. This has been obviously our only form of independence and that's a conversation people don't want to have. And we're going to see problems with that. We're not going to be the only ones. That's going to be an American thing that we're going to have to, to address. But in the same vein of, of the street signs, which I think is certainly doable, I think Councilmember Westcoats' comment was going to be on the traffic signs. Those are governed by the MUTCD and you can only do so much with the size on those. We can do something with the street signs. But one that I think's more important, it's certainly important to me, would be to, for us to increase our line item budget on striping for the roads. Drives me nuts when I'm in a pouring rainstorm or a snowstorm, the first thing I look for to tell me where I'm at when there's other cars around is that stripe. And, you know, it's nobody's fault. The UV and sun and rain start wearing that off. And boy, I tell you, I couldn't praise anybody more if we were out there every fourth day striping the roads. Because it's, it's personally important to me as a driver. It's got to be important to other people, so.
I, I got to agree on the striping. I've noticed particularly over in Kansas where they'll do a black-white striping. Where, where it used to be, they would have a, a larger black stripe with a white stripe on the center of it. And I asked staff if we could do that and we can't. But I've since noticed that over in Kansas, what they're doing is laying a black stripe and then laying a white stripe after it rather than on top of it. So that, you know, I, I don't know how the equipment works, but it sounds to me like the same equipment, different paint, you know, so. Councilmember Hubock?
As I asked one time, I had been out to Las Vegas and we were going back to McCarran Airport and it was two o'clock in the morning and you could see where the traffic was to go straight ahead. You could see where the, the ramp, the turn lanes and everything were because they used some sort of iridescent fluorescent, or I don't know what you would call it, paint on there. And it's shown when your, your car lights hit it, you knew exactly where you were. And I understood that we could do that. They don't have the snow that we have and everything. But still, we could do it and it would be worth it even if we had to do it every couple of years. But the people in Morningview are always telling us that they have trouble, especially when they're going west at night and it's raining and everything, they can't see where they are on, on the road like that. So I think that, that is one thing that we should spend money on. I don't think we should be chintzy about something like that. Because when you're driving and you cannot tell which lane, and there's five lanes of traffic and you can't tell which lane you're on, then there's just an accident waiting to happen. And so I think that that ought to be a priority for us. I don't know, and we could try it with something and if it doesn't work, we'll know to not do it again. But at least see what happens when it's raining. Because I tell you, when it's gray and it's raining and you can't tell whether it's a white line or an orange line or even anything, it's, it's difficult. Can, can we ask to have that put into the, the budget then for this coming year?
Well, I, I, we, we can certainly ask for some more information. For example, I know in California, those areas of California where it does not snow, they have reflectors that are put on the stripes. The reflectors are little plastic devices that are adhered to the road surface itself. Now, they work fantastic out there in California where it does not snow. If we had those reflectors here after the first snowfall, they would all be dug up. Now, I, and I do not know what the cost difference is between the, the paint that we use for the stripes and the, the striping that has got the reflective glass in it and stuff like that. So I think the first step, rather than just to put money on, in the budget, is to better understand the process. So I think the first step would be to, to ask for information from staff. And our engineering department could surely give us some information on, on that. Councilmember Westco?
Well, and, and just based on a few of the projects that, that I've seen, it seems that striping is a part of a project or a part of a road stretch as opposed to a separate line item. So, you know, it's, it's not, you know, we don't have one budget that says, you know, for striping and then we kind of dole that out. It's just kind of figured in.
That's a good point. That's a good point. And, you know, it, with, with the information that we receive, we could go on to say that in the future, when we stripe, we'll use this, this method and, and that sort of thing. But the first step is to better understand the process and the costs involved. Now, it's similar in, in, I think it was Councilmember Abdellguad that was mentioning the separate metering and stuff like that on, on properties. And I remember the discussion that council had recently about accessory buildings and that sort of thing. And there was a lot of concern and council, right and rightfully so, that separate, separate things on the same lot, you, you run into issues of why didn't you do a lot split? You know, what are you putting that other building there for really? Is it, is it a rental property or not? So, and, and I bring this up as an example simply because we, we could talk about something briefly and then not understand all the implications of it deeper down. And that's why it's, it's great when we have these work sessions where we get more information and, and further depth. And I don't remember when you said you were going to have to leave, but 15 minutes, okay, when, since this is a work session and not a meeting, you don't have to ask permission to leave, just kind of wave and, 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 yes?
Do you have any projects that, or anything that you wanted to discuss since, since your time is limited?
No, I think, I think we pretty much discussed where I was, where I was headed. Again, the, my real concern as we talk about all these issues is what are we doing, what are we doing to the families when we, when we decide to do any of this? How, how is that affecting them and, and how does that encourage their growth and, and helping them become stronger families?
Thank you. Councilmember Hubock?
I had another issue that I wanted to bring up. And that is, has to do with our fiscal year. You know, Raymore has changed its fiscal year three times. And I just wonder if we need to take a look and see at, if the present year that we use really fits our, our needs. Raymore has three events of the year. We have the calendar year that we have to work by. We have the election year we have to work by. And then we have our accounting year, which is our fiscal year that we have to do. We can't do anything about the calendar year. We can't do anything about the election year. But we can do something about the fiscal year if we, if we need to. What I did, the last time it was changed was in 1977, when they went from July 30th to November, first from July 1st to November 1st. And I had a copy of what, what transpired at that time. And all they said, they didn't say why they did it or anything. They just said, we recommend that it be changed. And they, they changed. What I think happened, and I'm just going back in, in my memory, Bob Frank was the city administrator. And at, at that time, we were fourth class office and that meant that the, the city, and that meant that the mayor then was responsible for most of the activities. He was responsible for seeing about the budget and things like that. And so they needed a little bit more time to get it done because after the April election, then the mayor only had a couple of months before he had to get the, the budget lined up. So that they wanted a little more time. Well, I noticed in looking at ours, we work on, on the budget. Now that we're in charter at Home Rule City, we work on the budget all the time. So it's not like there was any such thing. But the thing that caught my attention was when I went to chapter 67 of the state statutes on political subdivisions, miscellaneous pill hours. And I thought that you as auditor would be interested in some of these things here. Because what I found that was, that was bothersome is by this statute, we're supposed to have adopted our budget before we send down to Harrisonville what our levies are going to be. And we don't do that. We do, we, we pick a number that we want for, to be our levy and then we seem to make the budget fit those numbers. And I wanted us to talk about a little bit the pros and cons. And I wanted to see on the blackboard just the reasons why we feel that we need to keep it for, for the 1st of November and what would happen if we chose another time. I know that it, it would take a transitional budget, it's all it would take to get back if we wanted to change the line. And the federal government has changed theirs three times. And if they did it without any problems, I think Raymore can do it without too much problem. But what, the reason I went, the 1st of September, we have to have everything, our levies all down there at the county level. They work from, what is it, January to, to December? Isn't that your, your budget? And we have to have it down there by the 1st of what our levy is going to be. And before we do that, we have to have a public hearing. And so we have that sometime in August and determine what it is, the levy that we want to set. But we don't finalize and we don't talk about our levy and the rates of it until October. So that is after we have already told the county what we want. And to me, that seemed wrong. We, how do we know before we have finalized our budget, how do we really know what our levy rates should be? How do we know? Because we haven't determined, we haven't determined what areas we're going to work on if we want to ask for something more in the budget. We don't know those things because we, and so I wanted you all to, to think about that. Do we have the right time? How should we change it? When should we change it? And what is the advantage right now of having our budget year start in the 1st of November? What, what is the advantages to us on that when we have to let the county know what our rates are going to be back in September? I mean, it's kind of like the target and after, you know, force side of the thing. So I just wanted to, to know what it was that we, why we feel that it is important to us to have our budget adopted after we've already told the county what we want.
Well, before I open the Florida discussion on that, Councilmember, I remember that you had brought this up at a former, with a former council group. And your suggestion that we change the budget cycle was soundly defeated. With the comment from virtually every, if not all of the council members, their question at the time... their question at the time was what was broken that we were trying to fix? If we've had this budget system in place for the last thirty-seven years and it seems to have worked okay, what is it that you're trying to fix with changing the budget year?
I'm trying to make it conform with the state statute that says we have to have an adopted budget before we send down to the county and tell them what our levy is going to be. And we don't do it. And is there a reason why we don't do it?
So, is your assertion that for the last thirty-seven years, the city has been doing something illegal?
Well, we do a lot of things that's illegal, so, yes. Or not necessarily illegal, but not quite kosher. We have done it. But one of the things that I have noticed in reading past records is earlier councils took kind of a cavalier attitude about things. Well, if we can get by with it, let's do it. And nobody, if nobody says anything when we run the flag up the flagpole, then we will, we'll go ahead and do it. Because in the, what I found in their ordinances, they didn't give any justification for why they did it. They just said, "Let's do it." And they had three readings of it that same night, all three readings. And they went ahead then and changed it. And I noticed that one of the places it said that the council recommended that it be based on the quarterly, which would be an October start rather than in November. And no justification is given. And they changed it to November instead of that. And we don't know why or anything. So, I'm just asking that we try to conform with the state statute.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the floor with one caveat. Councilmember Morehead has showed up. So, as we had discussed earlier, he has to give us a complete report of his radio interview followed by his ninety-second elevator speech. But we won't, we won't put you on the spot just yet. Because councilmember Westco and then, and then yourself have the floor.
Two comments. I would imagine, and again, I was not on the council when they went to that because I think I would have been about three when they adopted that fiscal period. But I would imagine it had to do to mirror what the federal government was doing. You know, they, they operate on a similar budget cycle. So, my guess would be the reason why the city went to that was to mirror what the federal government was doing. And then that way, if there was any funding that came from the federal government, that they would be on the same cycle and not on the same schedule. Again, that would just be my, my thought. The other thing is if we have to have a, the budget adopted before it goes down to the county, instead of changing the fiscal cycle and the fiscal period, would it be more prudent just to actually adopt the budget in August? And just because, you know, we adopted, doesn't mean that it has to be in, you know, it doesn't have to be active and actually running at the time that that is sending down to the county. So, if we move the adoption process up, you know, adopt it in August or September, then send it, and it goes into effect in.
Yeah, this is one of those things that had been talked about before. And had I known that councilmember Hubach would have brought it up, I would have dug up the record of the discussion that the council had at the time. I'm sure that we probably, and I don't know because I haven't reviewed it, but I am, I have this feeling that our city attorney may have made comment, city manager may have made comment back when this was brought up before. So, before, I would suggest the council consider any change. I would suggest that we look at what had transpired before so we don't have to duplicate everything.
Well, I mean, and I came in partway through the conversation. I will only say that, and this is not actually directed to city staff, Ms. Hubach, if you could circulate where, what state statute we're possibly running afoul of and circulate that among us. And I'm not sure we're quite ready to, to, to do too deep of a legal, you know, analysis of this. But, because I guess I have to kind of default to, if we were in violation of state statute, somebody somewhere would have kind of hinted at that some time ago. And, yeah, and I'm, you know, the other thing too is as a person who's dealt with academic budgets that start in different months and then city budgets and personal budgets and all that, I almost wonder even if we tried to shift the budget period, are we running afoul of some deadline with something else? I just, let's, let's take a, let's take a look at that first. And if you say we're having, we have an issue, I respect that. But before we turn this into a big seek and find, let's take a look at that and kind of see really before we start wanting to make it. Because us changing a budget cycle for a city, I mean, that's turning an aircraft carrier. And, and I'm not sure, you know, those don't turn quick. And so, if we're afoul, then we're afoul and we need to correct it. But before, let's, let's make sure, let's really get a good definition on that first.
And while you have the floor, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to go ahead and give us that ninety-second elevator speech. But before that, now, the email that I got from you, it looked like you were being interviewed by a hip hop radio station?
KPRS, one oh three point three.
That is a hip hop radio station.
My first comment to them was I clearly was not their first choice. But actually, I knew, I do know personally the producer. So, they, what they, it is, it's a show called Generation Rap. It's high school students. And what they wanted was just, it was more of a school project than anything. They just wanted to get different people around the city to offer up perspectives about politics. It was more of a politics one oh one, government one oh one thing. So, it was, they threw out some fun questions and we had some nice discussions, actually. I've been peppered by friends just driving back from Grandview who had heard the show. I was amazed they were up that early on a Saturday because I'm amazed I'm up this early on a Saturday. But it went very well. I will say that the city of Raymore will not get any complaint calls or I did not say anything that would be disparaging. But it was a good time. It was a good discussion. It was a panel discussion with high school kids.
Okay, and your ninety-second elevator speech?
Oh, Lord. Okay.
And you can keep it less than, less than ninety seconds is fine too.
That's probably the hardest part. But, no, I, I'm not going to do the resume. But, so, I was thinking about this actually last night. You know, something that I did, you know, is not a resume topic about myself. You know, my dad was, his last assignment with the Air Force was to Richard Scobiar Air Force Base. And instead of living on base, he found this little town and he fell in love with the town. So, we were one of the first houses in Silver Lake. And so, we were under, we were one of the population numbers under a thousand, just to tell you the size. And so, in fact, I remember Ms. Hubach at the post office for, when I was a kid. And, you know, I loved growing up here. This really was a country town. I mean, it was, there were a lot of dirt roads that are now paved. And I had a wonderful time going to school here. I had a lot of friends. I ran afoul of the police department as a teen because the Johnson Drive here was a quarter mile before you got to the first house, even into the nineties. And so, I learned that a Ford Bronco can get pretty fast down that quarter mile. And I paid a lot of speeding tickets as a result of it. But, no, I mean, it was just.
And hence your interest in the law.
Hence my interest in the law, yes. You know, it's just fun to watch Raymore grow and develop like that. I trapped muskrat, peeled and sold the pelts for money when I was a kid around Silver Lake. I mean, that's how country this town was. And it was, but it was a neat place to grow up. And to go to Baines and Jeters and some of the places. I know Ms. Hubach remembers those fondly. And, you know, we, it was just a neat place to grow up. And to, and my father, when he joined the city council, Board of Aldermen at the time, he was a part of the council when they put the walking trail around behind Raymore Elementary in the park there. And that was considered controversial at that time. I mean, people rose up at meetings to say, "How dare you spend our tax dollars this way?" And so, it's fun now, and I remember my dad saying that to me. He goes, "You know, Derek, everything we're doing here, I'm not going to touch, but you will." And I've got a ten-year-old and a sixteen-year-old and they're riding, he's riding his bike in the streets in the paths that my dad put in. And so, now I'm seeing a lot of the same things. So, it's a lot of fun. I love seeing the growth of the town, though. I mean, I love seeing us at twenty thousand. I'm looking forward to more. I want to see this town get a little bigger, a little better. So, I'm enjoying the ride and this is a, and you know, I was, as I was telling them this morning, this is a fun group to work with. And they asked me, I said, "Any good political stories?" I said, "You know, the nine of us don't always agree." But I said, "You know, I've, I've been around a lot of other city councils that don't agree, that disagree in a lot different ways. We got a good team here. Even when I disagree with you guys and you disagree with me, it's kind of neat to see the byproduct that's resulted from it." And I'm, so, today is a fun day for me. I'm looking, you know, I, I don't know what we're, I don't know if you guys talked about expectations here, but, and I have none. I'm looking forward to just having some fun with you on a Saturday and talking. And my goal and objective for today was just to make sure we all kind of get to know each other a little better, communicate a little better because we are working in a good path, good direction. And that's my reelection speech too, by the way. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember.
I'm really serious about this on the fiscal year. Because one of the things that I found out in the year that I was off, when I went, came back on, I was dealing with things that were dealt, that should have been dealt with the year before in a budget. But because our budget year comes so late in the year that we have to wait over. So, if you'll notice on a lot of the things we're doing now, our budget items of thirteen and that have never been done. And so, that's one of the reasons that I want us to take a look at it and see. When we come on the council in April, we should be able to start making the changes that we want to make. We shouldn't have to wait six months later to decide that we want it and then it doesn't get on the budget because it's the asphalt plants have already closed for the winter or there's something we can't do until we have to wait again until spring. So, on our CIP projects, we're always running behind on somebody else's dime rather than on ours. And I think it's very important that when we as council come on, that the fiscal year run is close to the election year as possible. I really feel that.
Yeah, the only, there's two comments I'd make. The first one is there's, this has been brought up before and I think it's important to bring up that information that was generated back when you brought this up before. The second thing that I'd make, a comment that I'd make, and I think this is something that every one of us have learned as a new member of the council, you can have something that you want to change. But you have to convince the other council members that's a good idea, too. One member of the council doesn't change things. Councilmember Moore.
Well, and Ms. Hubach, I would kind of, for the sake of discussion, throw back to you. You know, I kind of like the fact that sometimes things are not perfectly done and timely done. I mean, my understanding of our use of the budget is that it is, it's, it's like the menu for the city and it can be changed and it can be adjusted. I mean, one of the things, I know that since I've been on the council, I've had instances where that was my, my talking point in defense or opposition of a position was not the situation itself, but how we're approaching it. I mean, if we, if our staff looks at an issue and says, "Okay, we've come to you. We project that we need X number of dollars and it'll take X amount of time." And if they come back to us later and say, "Hey, you know, that was reasonable and thought, but in practice, it's just not working that way," that's not a bad thing. I mean, I like the idea that we have the opportunity. And it's not, because not everything gets slowed up because we only have one vote or it takes a while to get a consensus here. Sometimes it's just the nature of the project itself. And, and that can be a good thing. I like the idea that sometimes not everything's done perfectly harmonious. And that, so, if something rolls forward in a budget, like with the curb issue, you know, not every linear foot of the curb is getting done. But that's because our staff is seeing that what is getting done is being done properly and they're not trying to rush the project too much. I like it when it works that way because that means that the check and balance of the systems at play.
And I'd comment that there are times the council has accelerated projects. An example of that would be the sidewalks where the council tripled the funding for that. And most recently, when we were talking about that, it sounded like there was a growing consensus on council that it needed to be increased even more. Councilmember Hubach?
The charter says that we are the only ones that can change. We, the council, are the only ones that can change the fiscal year. And I think we're all agreed on that. That's important and we be the one to do it. I guess the question that I'm trying to get through and I'm not succeeding too well is, why did we decide, what we decided when we were a fourth-class city is one thing. We're not, we're no longer a fourth-class city. We have a full-time budget director, you might say, and all of these things there. My question is, why did we decide that it is still the best time to do it? Why is maybe not October a better time? Why is it maybe July or something else? We have never discussed as to why we think this particular date is so important that it can never be changed. So, what I am, I guess, trying to find out is I want justification from you all as to why you're saying, "No, this is the only way we can go." And if it's the only way and that's the way you feel, that's fine. But I want a little dialogue with it to see because it doesn't fall in line with what chapter sixty-seven calls for on all of the cities have to do. And since it doesn't, it seemed to me like it was a good time to take a look at it, ask some questions and see what are the pro and cons for having it in November versus having it in maybe July or that. I had a list of all of the charter cities when they have their budget time. And most of them have it in July because that corresponds with not the federal government, but with the state government, state requirements of it. And that's what I am, where I'm coming from. I want you all to tell me why we have to have that particular time is more advantageous to the city of Raymore than any other time. Because I, to me, it is wrong.
And, and again, you've brought this up before, not at this council, but at another council. I think it's important that we get that information up before we have a lengthy discussion because the other council, to a person if I remember right, soundly defeated your proposal of changing the budget for good reason. I don't remember what that was because that was a few years ago and I'm not going to, you know, speak off the top of my head. But I'm sure that there is a record of information out there supporting whatever, supporting the decision that was made at the council at that town. Councilmember Abdelguad.
I was just going to say that I, I agree. If we decide to bring that up, maybe we can look at that meeting and read the discussion there. And then as a council, we can decide if it's something we need to further discuss or not. But I think it's important too to think about the fact that I feel like as a council and especially our city staff is great at planning ahead. So, in my opinion, I'm not sure that it really matters at which point in the year we sit down and work on that budget because we're always looking ahead at the next year. We're always, we always have projects from previous years that are wrapping up because things done on this grand of a scale can't be wrapped up and tied up in a pretty box at the end of the year. Things are always going to continue for further years and we're always going to be planning ahead for things that need to be done in the future. So, in my opinion, I don't see why it matters so much if we do it in July or November. I would like to say also as, and when I was a new council member and even now, there's so much to learn. Not, the majority of the people in the council don't have your education in governance. And so, if I was stepping onto the council in April and the first thing to tackle was the budget, that would be quite overwhelming. I think as a new council member, I remember feeling good that I had a little bit of time to get my feet wet, to learn about things that were going on in the city. And that was even after, I mean, as a new council member, I had come to meetings for a couple of years. I was on the parks board. I wasn't brand new. But having the chance to get my feet wet and some of the new things I was having to learn was nice before we were ready to jump on the budget. And even at that, we jumped on, we budgeted in August. So, to do it right off the bat in April, I don't think would be advantageous for new council members.
Derek?
Well, and, and, you know, you bring up, bringing that up, it immediately made me beg the question, what month would be better anyway? I mean, unless there's something state mandated. And if you've got some information, please share it. But, you know, I've dealt with other cities. I mean, the city of Kansas City, I believe, is June first. Well, you know, I've had city vendors, you know, a major city vendor for the city of Kansas City every year to make sure that they every year to make sure that they met their budget or did not exceed it. They would not pay my client from May first to June first because they were going to be over budget. And then what they did was they held it and then reissued a P O. number June second and then paid him for all the money they owed him from the... I mean, thankfully, we don't do that. I mean, and that's, I, I would be honest with you. I actually was very sensitive to that when I first got on the council. And thankfully, we don't do that. But I like the fact that when we have our public meetings, we get the, in our E-Packet, we get departmental notes. We get the status of the CIP. We get public works and what they've done. And we, you know, we're getting park board, you know, statements now regularly saying, "Hey, this, what's going on?" And so I, I would have to agree. I think we are being very informed. I, I don't see any, any concern over the staff doing anything that would concern me that we would need to change. I, I mean, unless there's another reason. Now, I could, I like the value of November because we have a lot of major capital projects that are done during the summer months that are able to kind of be done before we hit that budget time. And I like, you know, from that standpoint. But again, it's turning an aircraft carrier if we're trying to get, change budget cycle.
Council member Huback?
One of the things we have to remember that we're not just saying that we've always done it, therefore, we don't want to make change. That's one thing I don't want to hear from us because each year we have a new council. And each year that council can make its own input, leave its own legacy, whatever it is it wants, uh, to do. But what I'm, I'm reading from is Chapter sixty-seven of the Mathero statute. And I would like for that to be given to all of the council members so that you're agreeing with. It's where it talks, it constantly talks about adopted budget there. And so I'm just asking, you know, I'm a grateful leader in the law and doing what the law says. And it says you're supposed to have an adopted budget. To me, that means you have an adopted budget. It doesn't mean that you lie and you say, "Well, we'll do something else, but we'll call it this back there." So I, I'm kind of a purist from some things like that. So, so let's drop it then because, and, and...
You can send that link out to everybody. And I'd remind all the council members that we do have a budget work session coming up here in just a few short weeks on August sixteenth, so... And, uh, when you get that budget package, I always look at the budget in brief first. Other topics? Anybody want to bring anything up? Council member Huback?
I have another one. But this one we need, this one has, covers real estate and we have to go into executive session for that.
Uh, covers real estate in what, what way? Are you suggesting we purchase real estate?
Perhaps, yes.
Okay. I'll defer that then to Monday evening.
No, I'm asking for it right now because I understood on our meeting, we could go in, uh, in time, we could go into executive session if we had a need for it. And I think that there is a, an urgent need on it to make a decision.
Well, Ms. Huback, I, I mean, let me, just from a, the standpoint of what we're trying to do here today, how about, I, I would suggest this. Can we talk about the things that we just kind of want to openly talk about? If you feel compelled that you really want us to do this, can we do that at the end and then maybe see if people want to do that? Or if we're willing to defer to Monday night? Because I, I think a few other people have some topics to bring up and I'd hate to bounce in and out for something.
I'd like to hear what some of the rest of you have to say on that.
Council member Stevens, I saw you wave.
Yeah, I got a few things. Uh, I've had a, a number of older folks, which kind of includes myself. Uh, the roundabout down there, I'd like to have a little bit better lighting, maybe lighting on all four corners at night. It's kind of hard to see. Your headlights don't curve with you as you go. So some of those curbing to kind of come up on you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? That Mr. Stevens moves to that other chair there so that I can also read his lips. Because I'm, no.
That's a good point. Here, I'll lean back.
Well, all right then, because you're blocking with you and I can't understand it.
What I was talking about, Mr. Huback, was adding lighting to the roundabout so that, uh, older folks can see a little better at night. Uh, the other thing is, um, I have to think about it now. Curbing. When we get ready to go through our, uh, budget, I'd like to see, uh, some more, uh, money added to curbing so that we can kind of catch up a little bit. And, uh, the last thing I wanted to bring up was I've been getting a lot of comments, complaints about, uh, commercial, um, drives and stuff. People are complaining about all the potholes and stuff, uh, in some of these, uh, different areas. I think that's about all I got.
Anybody else on the, the floor, council member?
You know, one of the things I thought about, uh, at, for today actually struck me when we had a, one of the planning meetings for Hockford, or, uh, for, uh, the community center when we met over at, uh, the bank there. And, and a number of members of the council were there, park board members were there, et cetera. And I, I guess one of the things that I, I have to constantly remind myself is I don't know what's going on around Raymore all, all the time. I mean, I try to be more active or as active as I can in Ward Two, but it's fun to hear input from other people. I know council member Wesco and I have talked about doing a kind of a town hall just to pull citizens in. But would anybody want to give some thought to the idea of maybe doing that more as a general group? I know, I understand that, you know, the whole principle of they can come up every Monday night, but some people can't come up on Monday nights. And sometimes people feel a little, it's a little daunting to see us all sitting up regal on the bench there. But, um, you know, if we did do a town hall meeting, open it up to more people and seeing if more people want to come in. Because I would like to hear more about what's going on in, in the other three wards. And, and, you know, because again, we all represent actually the whole body of twenty thousand. I mean, we might be specifically for our ward, but our decisions affect it. But I think it'd be kind of fun to hear input from other people and just hear what's, you know, issues. I mean, we talked about the curbing issue before at, at a work session. And it was interesting to take a moment and pay attention to the curbs in another ward. I mean, because it does affect us. And, um, so that was just a general, open thought I wanted to throw out.
Council member Holman?
I support that idea. I think that's a great idea. I think we give the citizens another, I mean, we, we have a process for almost everything that we do and we could point to that process. But I think that one's one that, uh, would be much less daunting to the average citizen. It's this open, basically an open question-answer forum. Maybe we have some light refreshments and come talk to your city council about things that are going on. I think it's a great idea.
Council member Abdalqawon?
I agree. I, um, I know a lot of times people who call me or email me are intimidated to get, get up and speak in front of the council or in front of a group of people. And even people who get enough courage on Monday night to sometimes talk are like, "It took a long time for me to be ready to do this," you know? Um, if we did something like that, I'm, I might recommend that we do more of a meet and greet kind of format than actually a sit-down, come stand at the speaker and speak, you know, say your piece. Um, but I also kind of, um, on that same note, I would love to see us as a council be more in the community. Like, can we almost have a table at the farmer's market periodically to gather information from citizens? Or walk in the, the festival parade, you know? Just doing things like that to get our faces out there, to give people a chance to talk to us so that, um, you know, as individuals, a lot of us do that. But kind of more in that role where we get to really talk to people, see people, hear what they're saying and be a part of the community. Um, I know even at the goal-setting session and other times I've talked about being part of the community, we hear a lot from people that we, that they love the small-town feel and, um... So I just think that would help us be more approachable, give people the chance to reach out to us without having to come and stand on the television in front of a microphone. That's so intimidating to people, you know? So I would like to see more opportunities for us to just be in the community as council members and as a group effort.
You know, there, there is, uh, there, there are challenges. Uh, and I think everybody recognizes the challenges that, uh, exist with council members because it, it's not a full-time job. It's, it's something that it, it, it borders on being a volunteer slot, that you get a couple of hundred dollars a month for gas mileage. Uh, as an example, one of the opportunities that we all, all have, uh, to meet with the public occurs whenever we have a ribbon cutting. But those tend to be at eleven-thirty on Thursday, although there is one coming up at eleven-thirty on Tuesday and another one, uh, later on, uh, Thursday. Uh, but it's tough to make a ribbon cutting if, if you're sitting in your office, uh, someplace else and doing your day job. But that's, that's another way that you can, you know, meet with the public. I think, I think it'd be a great idea to have a, a meet and greet of some sort. Uh, that's something that we, I think we ought to hash out and, and figure out a, a good way of doing it. Um, I, you know, if you go for the, uh, the brunch over at Gregory's, uh, you'll meet public, I'll guarantee it. Uh, but, uh, you know, getting out, uh, setting up that communication path with the public, uh, i- is important. Um, I know I get more emails than I do phone calls, unless it's snowing or it's the Fourth of July. Uh, then, then I get a lot of both. Uh, I do put out a, a weekly report, an email report that has grown over the years. When I started that, when I was a member of the council, uh, and, uh, you know, the, the, the number of people was probably fifty or sixty at that time and has grown dramatically since then. Uh, that, that helps. I do get, uh, email, uh, feedback back from people, uh, asking questions and stuff. I don't try to duplicate, uh, the city report. The city, uh, has a really nice, uh, email that goes out every week about what's going on in the city. Uh, and I, and I hope all the citizens are subscribing to that or, or reading it online. But that's something else that you might consider, uh, as, as an outreach to your citizens. Just start collecting those emails when you do get an email. And then, uh, if, if not weekly, monthly, uh, you know, emailing a status out to your citizens. Uh, council member Huback, you used to do that, but I, I haven't seen any reports coming from you, uh, recently.
I've been busy. I, I do have a question for you. I, I may have missed it while I was outside. Um, that, that office that's over there on the, yeah, by two ninety-one and fifty-eight, that's not necessarily limit to Raymore, is it?
I, I don't believe it is.
It isn't?
I, I don't believe so.
I just wondered why we were, uh, promoting that and having a groundbreaking on it.
Uh, because they're a member of the Raymore, uh, Chamber of Commerce, I believe, is the reason. Um, having said that, maybe we could annex them in, uh, to Raymore? No, I guess it wouldn't be contiguous, would it? Darn it all.
Well, that was a question I had in mind. That was one of the... We're giving away the store. We really and truly are. And we're not expecting anything in return from it. We help them support their businesses. We help them do, we pay their, pave their roads. We do everything, but we won't ask them to pay the tax. So you ask us that have lived here all our lives to pay the taxes. And I'm saying, if they want all of these services that Raymore has to offer, they ought to be a part of the city of Raymore.
Well, I think in this case, all they want is a ribbon cutting. And that's being done in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. They're not asking for anything else, and I'm aware.
Well, then why are we going to be there then? We're not the chamber. The chamber is a separate operation.
You, you, you're correct. But we have a relationship between the city of Raymore and the chamber. Uh, and they've asked for a ribbon cutting, so...
Well, I'll just kind, kind of chime in on that. I mean, I, I like the fact that, and, and this is one of the best, the perks for me for the job, is I like the fact that here in Cass County, unlike dealings I've had in other counties, where we have a league of cities, where we do go and interact with the school district. And I loved being able to go out to Peculiar and Harrisonville and, and some of these other cities and be hosted and could talk to people and create relationships with them. I've shared sample ordinances with them and I've had people email me stuff back. So I, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm not ready to second a motion for a visitor's tax or a non-resident tax like that. Uh, you know, because I, I like the fact that I, I, we have these rela-, these good, soft relationships. And, and I like the fact that, you know, I, I read and see the mayor in the paper at other functions, not contained solely within the square footage of the city of Raymore, and it's a good showing. And so I think, I think it's just good public presence. And I think it should, Raymore needs to be demonstrated and it is in a positive light when we go out and do those things.
And, and that's another, uh, form of outreach, uh, that the, the members of the council can do is join the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and, and participate in the chamber meetings. Um, not just in Raymore either. Uh, Belton's got a very active chamber and Peculiar's chamber is, is building. Uh, Jay, you wanted the floor?
Yeah, I just had another topic. It's kind of a heads up and we just kind of ask everyone to, to give it some thought. I, I gave Eric, uh, I think it was at our last meeting, I, I asked Mr. Berlin, uh, to, to be placed on a future work session, um, agenda as a topic. What's the best word? Delineation signs, I guess, for entrance, entryways into the city? And I gave him, uh, a couple of photos, uh, of, of pictures of the entrance sign to the new Ballpark Village at St. Louis. If you've not been there, you can go online. The pictures aren't that great. When you see it in person, it's really something. Uh, Ballpark Village has been constructed right next to, it's still Busch Stadium since they sold it? Uh, and, and, you know, when you drove into, uh, to St. Louis downtown, that was always, the first thing you saw was a stadium. It's, it's brick, it's beautiful. Now, Ballpark Village actually catches your attention at first because of these entrance signs that they have. Uh, brick, uh, pillars, if you will, about halfway up and, and wrought iron or some type of metal. And then the, uh, the archway sign is, uh, uh, neon and it has kind of the Cardinals logo and says, "Welcome to Ball, Ballpark Village." It's just an example. Uh, like I said, I did give the photos to Eric and thought maybe they could kind of look into that. I know Cordish and Company did that development, so there's probably some information on it. But it just might give us some ideas. I know we've, we've talked about this or the city has talked about this before. This conversation's come up, not just here, but with Parks Board. It's come up, you know, in general with, with planning and zoning. And, you know, even my own children go, "Are we in Raymore or are we in Belton right now?" So I think that's something that we probably ought to look at and at least explore as an opportunity. And like I said, to give it some thought, um, I'm sure...
I see a bunch of people nodding their, in the affirmative.
You can kind of look at that just as an example and see what you think about it. So I just...
And I look forward to the, the work session where we'll have a deeper dive on that. Uh, you know, it's, it's, I, I brought up some years ago, uh, gosh, Janet was still, uh, park director. After visiting, uh, uh, something, uh, up in Wisconsin where there, there was a little tiny town, uh, probably six thousand people in it. But they were really on the map because of one event that they held every year, a cookie drop. And, and it, and it put them on the map. They dropped cookies, uh, with little tiny parachutes and stuff like that. And of course, they were well-known in, in Wisconsin for their cookie drop. And that's something that, uh, I, I had suggested that the park department look into. Is, is there something that we can do in Raymore that really puts us on the map? And that's, and that's something that's come up with our, uh, discussions that we have every few years about setting goals and stuff like that. In the same vein, though, uh, when, when is it that you're in Raymore, right? Uh, and, and without a, some sort of welcoming feature, uh, we, it's tough to tell. Council member Wesco?
Well, and, and if we put that there and then the mayor actually christens it, then, you know, it will always be sunny and seventy in Raymore, which will put us on the map.
That's right. Other comments, discussions? Uh, council member Stevens?
One thing I did forget was, uh, there's been talk about soccer fields and all that stuff. But I don't remember myself, but is, is there, uh, everybody talk about working with school districts? Being they have quite a bit of land that, that maybe we could put the soccer fields there?
Well, it's something we can certainly talk about in a future work session. I, uh, in fact, I'm, I'm not real sure where Peculiar is with the development of their soccer fields. And if I remember right, it was Lee's Summit that has a multimillion-dollar project going in, uh, uh, not with public money, it's private money. Uh, a major, massive, uh, soccer fields and, uh, retail thing. So if we put something in, it probably isn't going to have the draw that, uh, we, we would have hoped. But, council member?
I gotta strongly disagree with you on that, Mayor Kirkoof.
I'm right, you're wrong.
Got, got some, I, I, I think, I think he's on to something. I mean, I don't know if we'll ever do it or not. But I, I, I firmly believe personally from my experience that if we were to spend the money or were to find a, uh, private money or some combination of city and private money and we were to put in a, a quality complex, albeit much smaller than probably some of the other ones around, um, especially if we made it a multipurpose facility. I think, A, there would be the need, I think, B, there would be the use. And I think the economic development would jump through the roof. Uh, and if you don't, if you doubt that, I would, uh, suggest that you go with me sometime and I'll take you over to the Overland Park Soccer Complex. And you figure out where we're going to go eat lunch because we're going to be spending our money in Overland Park, near that Overland Park complex. The average economic development for one weekend at a tournament, and they have them all the time, is one million dollars to that city. Again, I, I realize that's comparing apples to oranges or maybe plums, but... but I think that there certainly is a need, and I think they would be used. And personally, like I said, I think that there would be a great benefit to the city for that. Again, don't know if we'll ever do it or not, but just coming from my own personal experience, I think it's, they're valuable.
And we do have a discussion coming up with the Park Board, and that's something that we can certainly, the council could broach with the Park Board.
You know, kind of tying into that, that's one thing I would like to see the council and the city do, is to try to find opportunities to either work with Belton and Peculiar to maybe create some mutual destination spots, whether that be athletics or, you know, other ways that we can, we can work together to try to show, you know, more of a cohesiveness in the northern part of the county.
Other conversations, suggestions? Councilmember?
This is more of a question. I know we had talked about Arts Council. Have we materialized that enough? I know that we were talking about adding it in to fund it in next year's budget. But have we actually, has there been anything more that anybody's heard of as far as construction of it? You know, we had talked loosely about the size, you know, letting citizens volunteer. Have we heard or thought about any more of that?
Parks have been doing something with their Arts in the Parks thing, but off the top of my head, I don't remember any. Jay?
There's something coming up in June, right? Don't they have some event?
Art in the Park, right?
Okay, yeah, is that the same thing you're talking?
No, no, this was actually setting up very similar to, you know, the P and Z and some of the other boards. Where we actually set up a, kind of an arts board. I know that there was some discussion with the future.
I will turn to City Staff. Put them on the spot.
I do believe you were talking about the Arts Council. And I don't think that staff has received, I think we were probably waiting on some point where we would get some direction on how you all wanted to solidify that. So we could be bringing that to a future work session.
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good, as a future work session. And I wonder if it shouldn't be in concert with the Park Board, but then again, it could be completely separate, so... Councilmember?
We did discuss that at a work session, because I remember talking about if it was going to kind of fall under Parks or if it was just going to be in general, how many people we thought maybe should be on it. And I think staff was going to do a little more research or kind of put together something and then bring it back.
Well, let's get it back on a work session in the future, and we'll go from there.
Just another thought. I know we just got through with the zoning request for the thirty-two acre thing up by I-49 in North Cass. I think it'd be a shame not to have a limited convention space up there, considering that they're going to have all those hotels at some point. I think that would be an attraction.
I missed it. What would be an attraction out there?
Convention center. I mean, they already got hotels and stuff. It seems like, I guess Derek has got some kind of idea that they're wanting to put the Civic Center out there. We've already talked about maybe limited convention space and that. I think it'd be a great idea if it actually could come to fruition at some point. I think it would be a great attraction to Raymore to have that here.
Well, that'd be an interesting thing for Gene Thompson to talk to us about, because obviously that's up his alley and to see, you know, because if hotels are going in, hotels typically try to put meeting space in with them. So it'd be interesting to see as he starts sensing and feeling business, you know, hotel chains that might want to come in. Is that something that's kind of open to discuss with them? I'm not sure we need a separate convention center, that the private sector may already do that for us. So I'd be interested to get Gene's thoughts on that at another time as well, especially once they start actually putting something to life down there, see what comes out.
Councilmember?
I agree. I know we've talked lots of times in the discussions about the community center, that meeting places is definitely something that we need in this part of Cass County. And Belton just built their event center, and I've heard great things about it, but I still hear people saying, "We need, we need that. We need spaces for people to meet that don't cost an arm and a leg," or sometimes even that do, that just have the opportunity to have several different rooms, you know, for meetings that might break out or things like that. So I have to admit that when I saw the plan with some hotels on it, that was one of the things that immediately went through my mind. Hopefully, they'll build something with some space for people to plan meetings in. That's also something I've had a few people talk to me about, that on, right there on I-49, that would be excellent. I think the entire council got some emails about the community. They call it a community center in Clinton that actually is more of an event space with a little bit of community, what we would consider a community center in it, and how popular that is for that part of the state, and that something like that might benefit us here as well.
Councilmember Stevens?
The only reason I keep mentioning convention space in conjunction with Civic Center is just a way to help subsidize and pay for it. I mean, I just think it's something that would keep the Civic Center from costing taxpayers.
And that's kind of part of, as I explored more, the center that's in Clinton. They have that event space. And the community center part of it is free for people who live in Clinton because the event center part pays for it.
Other topics for discussion? All right. Councilmember Hubach, you wanted to go into executive session. Can you give us enough information so we know that we should go into executive session?
Well, before we do, I had something else that I wanted to...
Oh, okay.
There's a number. There are a number of places in our municipal code that do not agree with our city charter. And there are a number of things that we did when we were a fourth-class city that aren't really necessary now that we are at home rule. And I was hoping that the council would see, ask the mayor to choose three of us to go on and to do a research of the municipal code and try to bring it up to date. And I was wanting to be one of that members, because we've got a number of places that, like I said, where the code and the charter and the state statutes do not agree. And this might be a good time for us to look at it and try to bring it up to date. We did it once before on setting up rules, because, Mr. Mayor, I believe you and I and Mr. Cox were on that commission to look into it and to make sure that we are in agreement with it. So that was one of the things that I wanted to bring up today. I would like to see us do that, because compensation is one of them. There are, nothing is said about vacancies on that, how we do on council vacancies in between the sessions. Then there are some up-to-date changes and some corrections. And we have things that have been done by the charter and have not been transferred or translated into the municipal code. And we will find those out as we go through them. I had a list, but I'm not going to bother you with them today. But I think we need to set up something like that.
I think a good first step towards that, if you have a list of things that are in conflict, if you can share that with the rest of the council, and then let's have a work session to discuss that before we set up a commission to address it.
Well, and I had actually had us talk a little, a couple of months ago about the idea of, do we need to have a charter commission established at a more regular basis, even to just kind of occasionally do the, what I call the political, you know, checkup, where, you know, if there is an inconsistency or if there's some concern like that, that body would be there to address the, you know, or at least field the question and kind of pull together some sort of answer for us. Is that what you're, I mean, this is more of a question now that I've said all that. Because I know you've mentioned that you've seen some issues in conflict. And obviously, if we are in conflict, that needs to be addressed. But is this more of, so are you saying you just want the mayor to create, kind of like we did with the roundabout committee? Are you asking for a more formal, where people are looking at our charter and our codes for inconsistencies on a more formalized basis?
Well, I guess really what I'm saying is for a more formalized basis, because I can see some things that when the charter amendments were passed by the people, they weren't translated in exactly the same way but into the municipal code. And as a result, there's a different interpretation of what was meant to happen. And I don't know how, I'm not the attorney, but I can, there's some very obvious. I just found that and looking for something else. And so I just thought I would bring it up and see how the council feels about something like that.
Well, I'll start off by saying, and I'm not the council's attorney either, but...
But you do play one on TV.
I do, on the radio, exactly. Well, I mean, Ms. Hubach, I'll tell you, I mean, if you see that there's a concern here, I will openly acknowledge that we've had a couple instances over the last, my two years on the council where you've brought a question to the table, that it did turn out that there was an inconsistency. So I'll validate you on that. Maybe not every issue, I've agreed with every issue, but you have caught some things. And so therefore, if you feel there's something of concern, I would be supportive of at least taking a look at a list. Now, the construct of how we're going to do this, though, I'm concerned about time management and allocation of resources. I would hate to see our city staff just get overwhelmed looking at this. Because this, I mean, if we were to do a, in the law, when we don't have an exact law in the state, we have to do what's called a fifty-state review, where you have to reach out and look at whatever, and that takes at times months or years. I would hate for us to try to do what I would call a fifty-state review on every line item in our charter or code. But at the same time, you know, if you're saying, hey, will somebody be willing to volunteer to spend a little time to look at these things to at least flesh out what might be possible? I'm not opposed to that. I just want to make sure that what we do, one, if it's wrong, it gets fixed. And two, it doesn't turn out to be a waste of time.
Yeah. I think the first step, again, the first step would be to, Councilmember Hubach, is to provide that information to the rest of the council and we can structure a work session. I'm real hesitant to suggest that the council change the charter. However, if the city code is not in line with the charter, I think that's something the council surely should address, and we have, as mentioned, we have in the past. Part of the process, of course, is to review the city charter in relationship to the, excuse me, the city code in relationship to the charter, and to remove opinions and to get facts out on the table. Now, we do have coming up, and I don't remember when, but we'll have a review that will be in the future here in the next few years, doing another charter commission to review the charter itself. That would be done by citizens of Raymore and, which is right and proper. So Councilmember Kellogg, go on.
I just had a quick question. I was curious, Ms. Hubach, you mentioned that there was a committee, Mr. Cox and the mayor and you. Was that what...
Council Rules Procedures Committee, if I remember right. And that was, well, Councilmember Hubach, Cox and myself, and I don't remember how many years ago that was, but that was more, what was the, do you remember the name of that committee?
The Code of Conduct Committee.
Code of Conduct Committee. And it was actually to add some stuff into the city code about how council members were to handle issues and stuff like that.
So it was very different than what she's suggesting?
Yeah, yeah. There are, there's a couple of things that, you know, we're bound by, the council is bound by this city charter, the city code, and also the council procedures. And each of those are controlling things. Of course, the overriding of those three is the city charter. And of course, we're bound by state law and federal law and laws of nature, so... Other comments? Councilmember Hubach, you wanted to go into executive session. Can you provide us enough information so we can determine if we do? Councilmember Hubach?
I'm trying to determine if it's worth my time.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I share something real quick?
Please.
In the meantime, I just wondered, I got this invitation from West Central and Harrisonville. Did everybody get one of these for the poverty simulation?
Yes, oh, I did. I don't know if everybody...
Has anybody ever done that before?
I've lived it.
I grew up poor, so I don't really need to go.
You, what?
So I grew up poor, already know what it's like.
And I think Councilmember Kellogg would step in at this point and remind us that he, for a time, lived in his car, so...
Mr. Mayor, I really do feel that we ought to go into executive session to discuss real estate matters. And I will bring them up and explain it to you in the meeting. And if you don't want to go into it, that's fine.
And this is, real estate matters in this case would be the city purchasing real estate?
I don't know that I want to have go on the record for that right now.
Well, my hesitance about going into executive session without knowing what the topic is is that it is important for this body to be transparent to its citizens. If we are going to go into executive session to discuss the...
Real estate matters.
Immediate, real estate matters can be, we're going to be talking about any number of things that should be talked about in public. If we're going to go into executive session to discuss real estate matters about the purchase of real estate, that would then have bearing on the potential cost of that real estate, as this body has done in the past. So I will put it then to the council. Is there anybody...
Can I pose a question? For clarification's sake, is this designed to be a discussion about annexation?
Not, yes and no.
I mean, because it, again, since this was not necessarily designed to be a formal work session and more informal, I don't mind if you, if, I mean, because I don't think we have to go into executive session to talk about general concepts of annexation itself. Now, if there were particular properties related, then I understand when you say "real estate matters." So maybe that helps define what you're trying to communicate to us. But if you just want to say, you know, for example, I know that there's been floating around the idea of, hey, let's put a group of citizens together and put like a annexation committee together. I mean, if you want to talk about it in those terms, I'm cool just talking about it openly now. I don't think we have to go into executive session for that. But if you have specific discussion points, then I would understand.
How far is this, how far is this communication going? Is it going to be published? Is it going to be privileged?
I'm assuming we are being recorded now, so anything discussed here...
Then I will not bring it up. I will not bring it up.
Okay.
Would that be something that would be, you'd rather reserve for a Monday night when we have an executive session meeting to communicate to the mayor and staff to be added on? Is that what you're looking for?
Can I make a suggestion?
Let me turn off my mic. Is this Councilmember?
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion? Would it be possible for the mayor and Councilmember Hubach to just have a brief conversation, for her to let you know exactly what it is to see if you feel that it qualifies to go into closed session?
Well, we could do that, but in reference to Councilmember Morehead's thing, this is a, this is a get-to-know-you meeting. And if we have an executive item, I would defer that to Monday, when we have a more formal work session. And in fact, I am proposing Monday that we do go into executive session for personnel matters. So we'll have an executive session Monday, so... Other discussion? Another topics? Councilmember?
And the job that I currently work in, our group leader, a lot of times will take us out for a meal as a team-building event on his or her dime. I've not been privy to that since we've been here. Is that something that you like to do, or have you ever considered that?
I'll second the motion. I second the motion.
Okay, and we're going to go out for a meal. We won't discuss city business and stuff like that. I'm proposing, and you'll have to provide your own transportation, but in October, I understand Scotland is a great place to have a meal. So we'll be going to Scotland. You'll need to set up your own flights. The meal will consist of haggis and Scotch. Now, if you drink enough Scotch, you'll enjoy the haggis, so... Well, thank you, everybody. It's, we'll, we, our, our next meeting is Monday evening, a work session, if I remember right, that's with the Park Board, which is, which is really good. Speaking of Park Board, well, he's gone, and I've talked to you. There is another opening for another, and I've received your inputs, so thank you very much, so.
I, I do have a question here on about the Park, about the Park Board. As you all know, for some time, I have been very unhappy about the memorandum of understanding that we have with the Park Board. It is not called for by state statutes, and it's only was done, it was started here with, with a former city administrator as an ego issue. And as a result, it has kind of grown to where it is not really what the Park Board is not allowed to have the authority that it's supposed to have. And I checked in with what Kansas City, they have a very good Park Board, and how they handle some of their things, and I thought I wanted to throw it out and see how you all feel about it. They do not have a liaison on the Park Board. We had that, and it didn't work. The main reason it didn't work for us was because we did, we as a council agreed, we didn't want one city council member to have to spend more time on a, a number of meetings that the rest of us didn't have to. That was, they felt it had put an unfair burden on us. But anyway, what Kansas City does that, that I like, they do not have the liaison, they do not have a memorandum of understanding. What they do, they have an ordinance that says, if the Park Board has a proposal or anything like that, that the council doesn't think has been thought through or they don't like, what they do then, they have two councilmen can come before the council and ask for either an investigation or more information regarding that project. And I wondered if we had thought about something along that line rather than the liaison. But I talked to, as you know, Mike Metzger was on that as our liaison, and I talked to him about it just recently, and he had a lot of reasons why he felt it wasn't effective, and I'm not going to go into them at this time. But I've thought that there's other options that'd be available to us, because we meet with the Park Board, and it is supposed to be semi-autonomous. They have their own budget, they make their own rules, they make their own regulations, they hire their own people. But we meet with them in order to know what is, what is going on. And it seemed to me that we ought to consider something like this ordinance, which would have people coming before the council, council members, and saying, "Let's look into it," rather than trying to always second-guess the Park Department. I don't know how you all feel about it, but I wanted to, to bring it up.
Well, I'm about to share that. One, I, I don't want to get too deep into part of that conversation, because that's actually what we're going to talk about-
On Monday.
-on Monday night. Other than to say, a number of members of the Park Board have requests and liaisons, so just for, for information on that. Two, I want to jokingly say, I, let's not talk about abolishing the relationship of the Park Board on Monday night. That may interfere with our ability to get most of the meeting accomplished.
That's the reason I'm bringing it up today.
But, but, but to add, to be serious about what you've talked about, I mean, I mean, obviously, it's within our purview to discuss what, how, and to what degree we want to have a relationship with the Park Board. Right now, I believe, if we do that, I think a work session would be appropriate to discuss that. But I, I would recommend that we save that till after the budget. We're too close upon the current budget, and again, you know, I keep with the metaphor of turning an aircraft carrier. I, I just think it would be very detrimental to staff to have to try to have us make a decision quick enough and to have the, that affect what they're doing with the budget very quickly, because they're working on that right now. And so, for more of a long-term discussion topic, I think that's a good discussion topic, and I want to support that. I just think right now, I don't think that's a, it's the best timing for that.
And let me add to that, that, council member Hubach, you brought this up before other councils, and I think the, for a wider discussion, we'll need to have the information that was provided to the other councils. Council member, whatever your name is.
I, I would, I would add, just, you know, my opinion is, is, you know, every, every year, the council makes a, a transfer of money into the Park Board. And the way that I view it is, you know, we make that transfer, but the MOU's in place to make sure that we ultimately have some control over taxpayer dollars that we've transferred. So to me, I mean, the way that I view the MOU, it's a trade-off. You allow us some say over what goes on, and we transfer money into your control. So, you know, it's kind of a, you know, a tit-for-tat type of a situ, situation. So, for me, I'd rather see it stay in place, because then if it's not in place, I don't feel comfortable making those budget transfers.
Other comments? Council member Hubach?
Well, you all are talking about budget. I wasn't really talking about, I was talking about a concept, a concept and a philosophy rather than a, a budget item.
Yeah, but I think that even addressing-
You think they're intertwined?
But even addressing that will have budget consequences, and, and even if it's not significant, I mean, and, I mean, Mr. Berlin's sitting over by himself over there, I would say, I would hate to put him in a position, or staff in a position, to have to even try to ascertain how that would be affecting it, right before we do the budget. And, and that's why I'm saying, it's a good, valid topic to discuss. I just think we need to wait till later in the year, get past the budget. Then that's a topic for later, and then we talk about it.
So, so you want to put it off for about four or five months then, because that's when our fiscal year is, so that's when we have to talk about those kind of things. We can't discuss them earlier.
I, I would add that, as, as council member Morehead used an analogy, this is turning a battleship, or an aircraft carrier, or an island or something. It's not something that'd be taken lightly or trivial, and, and I'm not suggesting any of you are taking this lightly. There is also some history here. You've proposed, proposed this before to other councils, and there were, there was information produced back then, that I think would need to be provided to council now. It is a discussion that we certainly could have at some point. It's not, there, I, I do not see a vital need to drop everything and address this, this item. It's something that should, should and can be addressed. Unless you can say, say, say that there is something that is, there is a vital need to change the relationship that we have had over the years, which I haven't heard yet.
I am just asking, we follow the state statute, and it applies to Park Boards, and we're not doing it. And that's what, I, I have difficulty, as you all know, when, if it's in black and white, I'm inclined to take it as gospel when it comes from the state and the state statute. And if the state statute says we're supposed to do something, or we're not supposed to do it, then I don't like trying to circumvent what the state says on different things. Now, that's where I come from on, on that, and you all need to know that, because you, you know, when I speak up on certain things, that if it's not following exactly the state statutes, or what we have, our charter we have said, then I want to know why we're doing it. And the fact that we've always done it is not good enough for me.
And, and I, and I remember that you have brought this up before, and I also remember that the, the concern was alleviated. There is a memorandum of understanding, and I, I would just say, let's get that information that has occurred before, that alleviated it, and bring that before the council, before we, you know, go into an in-depth discussion that, that about it, so. Other comments? Well, thank you, everybody, for taking time out on your Saturday. I, I'm sorry we missed you on the radio. Maybe they've recorded it, and we can, you know, we can hear the streaming audio on the internet, or-
I really hope they didn't.
Thank you, everybody. We'll meet again on Monday evening in a work session.